Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Trustees meeting today. We've got a bit of a unique circumstance with both our Chair and Vice Chair unable to attend. We do have two trustees participating virtually. We've got Trustee Holdley and Trustee Williams connecting through Zoom and are able to vote on membership and things that come forward, but I'd like to defer to Keith Hahn, our General Counsel, for direction on how to move forward without Chair and Vice Chair.
Good morning, everyone. As a result of this circumstance and as set forth in Article Two, Section Three of the Board's bylaws, the members of the Board in attendance shall elect a Chair Pro Tem who shall be the most senior trustee in length of service on the Board. That distinction belongs to our own esteemed former Chair, Trustee Chen Zhang. At this point, I would ask for a motion to elect Trustee Chen Zhang as Chair Pro Tem for this, the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Board of Trustees.
We'll move.
And we will do a roll call vote.
We'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Burris.
Yes.
Trustee Chen Zhang.
Do I have to skew myself from this one?
You can, or you can vote. Yeah, okay, okay, abstain. Trustee Holdley.
Yes.
Trustee Liggins.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem, Chen Zhang, the meeting's yours.
Oh, thank you. I can't believe- And are we all set with our live stream?
Jacob's giving us the nod. Thank you, Jacob.
Terrific. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And also, are there any comments from our trustees regarding our January twenty-fifth
meeting minutes? Hearing none, I would like to ask for a motion to approve our meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
So, first of all, I would like to extend a special, a very warm welcome to our special guest, our trustee emeritus, Mr. George Franklin.
Thank you for having me, and I want to take credit for this building. I remember my vote in Florida now. If I did, I would have.
Well, it's a beautiful building. So you serve as the, so trustee emeritus Franklin served as the Dublin Board of Trustees from eighty-nine to two thousand and one. That's a long time. So he served for two terms and actually very impressively was appointed by both sides of the governors. One is James Blanchard and the other is John Engler. So I think George and I know each other actually from our days at Kellogg. I was like twenty-seven maybe, and he was a spring chicken himself at that time. So, but today, he is the author of several books, including his latest, has a very nice title called "She Talked Like a Millionaire: Slept in a Parking Garage and Fooled Nearly Everyone." And so it's on campus to be featured in our latest We Talk program. So at three P M. today, George is going to be joined by Wall Street Journal reporter John Kemp in a discussion about mental illness and homeless and how these issues hit George and especially your sister, who was very dear to your heart. And so if you have a time, I highly encourage you to join this very important and interesting program. We will also have special guests and our alum Calum's mayor, David Anderson, on the panel at that time, and we thank trustee emeritus, right, for, for, I don't know whether we should have thanked you for this building or not, but we thank you for all the hard work you have done.
The article written by John Kemp of Wall Street Journal, who did a spectacular job, and it's about my sister, who was the former producer of the McNeil and layer report, who ended up published in Mental Illness. So, thank you, Western, for hosting this event today because we're trying to get a message out, and this is a spectacular work to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I also want to appreciate the Office of Government Relations for organizing this discussion and for leading the We Talk program. Thank you. So in, within our board, we also have some important events. What's coming up is we have two of our board members, Trustee Liggins and Trustee Williams is going to represent our board to participate the Association, it's a mouthful, so I'm going to read it, Association of Governing Boards Twenty Twenty-Four National Conference of Trustees. That's going to be in Boston. I actually participated in one of these, I think, years ago, and it was really informative and very beneficial. I think while we as an institution have very unique challenges ourselves, being in Michigan after declining high school graduates and declining population, we have some unique challenges, but a lot of the challenges is actually shared by every universities, regardless of the size, regardless of the geographic where you reside, it's, it's shared. So this is really a place for people to share their best practice, to share their insights, and share some innovative strategies. So I learned a lot from that conference. So thank you, Trustee Liggins and Trustee Williams, to go there on our behalf. And I know you guys are very seasonal professionals yourself and actually very experienced board members in other boards. So the, the matter of fact that you are willing to take time out of your busy schedule to go really sets example of our continual learning, lifelong learning spirit within Western. Now, I'm going to talk about a program that I personally have very great passion for, and you wouldn't know why. It's called Alaska Tax Program. As you know, well, it is in the tax season, and on my background, I'm a tax CPA. That's where I know George. So this is the tenth anniversary of this program of students and alumni led by Dr. Fritz Elhoff, Department of Philosophy professor. I don't know how he fell in love with taxes, but. So this year, basically, ten students and our alum went to Alaska to help the residents prepare their taxes. So ten of them, hold your breath, prepared four hundred and fifty tax returns. So I know some of you are struggling with your one tax return. So, I see a couple hands in the audience, so you know how impressive that number is and what a precious opportunity for students to have some hands-on learning experience as well as bring big impact to these areas. This program is actually a partnership of eight universities and reaching more than a hundred and fifty villages. The economic impact benefits to this region is actually five million dollars, which is not small changes. So kudos, kudos to, to the students and alums and Professor Fritz Elhoff. And of course, it takes a village to do these programs. So special thanks for all those across campus who continuously support the program, including the College of Arts and Science, Department of Philosophy, the Hayward's College of Business, Department of Accountancy, Medical Humanities Workshop, Work Group, the Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, and alumnus Matt Bleda. Another exciting thing as we forge forward, building and shaping Bronco, we are, I have great excitement in the piece of Western history that's being brought to new light. I'm referencing Dr., Mr. Albert White, and he is the, some of you familiar with his name? He is the African-American bricklayer, missionary, and entrepreneur who is responsible for building, for building the foundation of the Heritage Hall. So Mr. Albert White's narrative continues to develop. If you remember, last fall, we paid our tribute to his pivotal contribution to laying the groundwork for W M U. And yet this spring again, we are going to do another celebration honoring the university's commitment to diversity and inclusion. We will celebrate with the unveiling of a permanent wall display during the ceremony at two P M. and put on a date, April nineteenth, on the first floor, right here in Heritage Hall, illustrating Mr. White's enduring legacy as a cornerstone of Bronco excellence. And thank you for all involved in this project, including University Advancement, Lisa Garcia, Assistant Vice President of Community Partnerships, the Walker Institute, the College of Education and Human Development, and the Facilities Management. And then finally, on March first, I had the privilege of delivering personal reflections in a very special event. We held a memorial service commemorating the life our beloved Dr. Ming Lee, the late Dean of the College of Education and Human Development. The year he served as the Dean was two thousand thirteen to two thousand and twenty-two. The gathering took place outside of the Sangre Hall, where you would, now you will see an Oregon Trail, I want to make sure the tree name right, Oregon Trail Maple Tree and a plaque. I think this location of these tree and the plaque is perfect because we all know what Ming loves, the students, the College of Education, and this university. The foundation that he had during his tenure continues to serve as our guiding framework. Anybody talked with Ming knows his passion and would be touched by the, by his positive energy, his enthusiasm, and he can talk about higher education with you for hours. I, I used to tease, because every time he, he invited me to dinner, we end up talking about higher education, the challenges, the opportunities, the ideas, and all that. So I used to tell my husband, probably should have taken a motor before I go there. So, but I, I miss him dearly, so do all of us. So I think we were honored to, what's very special about this ceremony is we have his wife, Wen Chen, who is a finance analyst at the College of Human Health and Human Services, as well as his family, his grandkids, and his grand dog there. So, which make this event truly very, very special. So special thanks to President Montgomery, University Advancement, and the Timothy Light Center for Chinese Studies for organizing the ceremony. So now let's turn our attention to today's business. On today's agenda, President Montgomery will introduce Dr. Lauren Foley, Assistant Professor in the Department of Political Science and Director of the Capital Intern Program, and discussing the impact of internship program has had on students since its inception and how it is an exemplar of experience-driven learning. I believe some of the students who went through this program became very accomplished politicians and also become a lot of the civic leaders. So this is really an excellent example how experience learning at its finest. And under action items today, several items are under consideration in consent items, among them being liquor license approval for three upcoming events this year, including Annual Medieval Congress, May ninth through eleventh. I want to mention, I ran into, totally by coincidence, a very famous attorney now in California, and he is the medieval study, master degree. So, and I said, that is impressive. And he said, yeah, I hung my degree from Western very prominently in my law office because everybody see that. They instantly have respect to me. So the, another one is an outdoor concert at Miller Plaza on June twenty-second, and the College of Aviation's Annual Hall of Honor Induction Ceremony and Aviation Education Center on November eighth. I don't know whether we should have looked around that one, but. We also have several curriculum proposals to consider, including the addition of a Master of Science in Manufacturing Engineering and the creation of graduate certificates in aviation administration and global leadership and learning. So we want to thank you to Graduate Studies Council and the Faculty Senate for your hard work in getting those programs forward to us. And that includes my opening remarks and to the, and introduction to the agenda items. So I would like to ask this time President Montgomery to share your remarks.
Thank you, Trustee Chen Zhang, and welcome back to presiding. You wield the gavel with great aplomb. Welcome back, everybody, from spring break. I hope everybody got a chance to recharge and turn our attention back to business at hand. One of the main activities that we're engaged in campus-wide is Future Bronco Days. These are really kind of remarkable efforts that bring together faculty and staff from across student affairs, across academic affairs, involve public safety. It's really an all-out campus effort to tell the story of Western Michigan University. And when parents come and their, and their kids who are prospective students come, they see what Western and the community is all about. The result is, when they come, by and large, eight or nine out of ten of them end up enrolling here. So if you come to Western, you visit Western, you meet the people at Western, you want to be a Bronco. And that's because of the way our community turns out. And so I want to thank all of those people who participate in the events. I want to make sure I give a shout out to the ASU folks who make our campus look absolutely fantastic at those point in time, and people who take time out of their day to answer parents' questions, to reassure them about what it's like to become a member of our community. It is absolutely critical to our future. And so I want to thank everybody who helped participate in that. Their efforts don't go unnoticed. So we've got another event tomorrow, and we'll be doing some more as we keep going forward. So thanks, folks, for that. Also, this week, on Friday, we have a, our annual Presidential Scholars Convocation, where we recognize the top seniors as they close out their educational journey. This ability to recognize the top seniors requires our faculty from every single department to nominate students and recognize and judge those who've made an exceptional effort in their studies and come together and honor them for their academic achievement. Again, I want to thank faculty for their guidance and mentorship, both in preparing the students and then going through the process of electing them. I want to thank our friends in the Faculty Senate for their incredible effort cosponsoring this event and bringing it all together. Some of the students are just absolutely, well, all of the students are just absolutely amazing, but several of them have been shining and soaring all the way across the state. We've got alumna Zahira Sanchez, who was last year, twenty twenty-three Presidential Scholar, but now is an Environmental Engineer at Belarus Paper Mill in Escanaba. Another alumnus, John Goheen, is working at Aerospace Processing Engineer in Triple Link in Troy. Alumna Logan West is a Nutrition and Health Programs Manager, Southwest Michigan Food Bank, and I could go on and on and on. These students were stellar in the classroom, and then we prepared them to be stellar as they go out in their career. So again, thanks, everybody, who participates in this recognition, but also thanks for everybody who prepares them to be able, to go out and realize their dreams and find successful careers. We've got some exciting news that we've been trumpeting around, a series of bills made possible by the federal government agreeing to fund a variety of different departments in fiscal twenty-four. One of those bills allowed us to get a two-point-two-five million dollar earmark for Project Clean Michigan. It was championed by Senator Gary Peters, and so I want to make sure we thank Gary Peters for his efforts, Senator Peters for his efforts in helping our faculty get this proposal through. The research is being led by Mert Attalon, is a professor in chemical and paper engineering. Is he here? There was some rumor. Oh, there he is. Okay. This project really aims to address CO2 emissions in Michigan by implementing direct air capture technology and establishing a network of pipelines to transport C M two to underground storage sites, particularly, potentially, salt caverns. By implementing this technology and capturing approximately fifteen percent emissions in the state, local air quality will improve, will make a contribution to climate change. And so I want to thank him and his fellow collaborators for this great work. The advocacy obviously takes a great proposal, and then it takes great advocacy to get things over the line. So I want to make sure I thank our Governor Affairs team who worked with Senator Peters' office and to bring that over the line, and obviously our VP for Research, who was instrumental in all of that. So again, takes a village, but starts with brilliant ideas and brilliant faculty. And so I want to make sure I give a shout out to those who are directly participating. In addition to Professor Attalon, there's Dr. Autumn Hogsmann from the Michigan Geological Survey, Director of the Michigan Repository Research and Education, Dr. Keisheng Li, Chair and Professor of Chemical and Paper Engineering, and Dr. Queen Li Wu, Associate Professor of Chemical and Paper Engineering. So a great team effort, a really significant project that will make a difference, a real difference in people's lives. So, thank you. Applaud you again. Want to make sure we acknowledge a recent great event we had just the other day. Trustee Kelly Burris was our keynote speaker for the Presidential Leadership Series. She got a, got a full audience out there, including all the women softball players who came to see what the, was it thirty-five years ago that you were on the team, something like?
I heard it was a birthmark.
They said, they invited her to play third base or first base in the upcoming game. So anyway, so again, a great and very inspirational remarks, and also thank you, WSAC President Ms. Powers, for moderating the conversation, and she did a great job there as well. So worth, very worthwhile and inspirational event that talks about Broncos. In the spirit of appreciation, we're drawing near to a grand reopening for Dunbar Harrow. I guess it is actually opened, but we haven't had the official reopening. This is an incredible capital project. Again, wouldn't be impossible without support from our state and our local delegation who helped push that over the line. Really hats off effort to Carla Karetzky and Dan Gaiat, who spearheaded their shops effort, and obviously Jan and her team who did the building work. And it is an amazingly different building. If you had been in the old building, you'd say, ooh. And if you go in the new building, it's really inspirational. It's got stuff that you'll, you'll find almost no other place can match, and that's really a testament to our faculty and staff and administrators who put together this effort. So thank you for that. Not only is it an impressive building with state-of-the-art facilities, it's going to be a lead goal building and has two living vegetable, vegetative roofs as well. And for those who are bike riders, it has a bike transportation place and all, all the ways in which we can also contribute to our sustainability goals. And that's also a central part for the campus as well. So hats off to them, and thank you for that, that building. And we'll have a grand opening, I guess, April twenty-fifth, after our next building, and so the Board will be able to visit the site as well. I want to give a shout out to a team of people from the College of Engineering and Applied Sciences, their Chapter of Industrial and Systems Engineers, for their outstanding achievements at the twenty twenty-four, twenty-four I I S E Regional Conference in Ohio University. They brought home not only first place, but also second place. So, so they smoked all those other schools. The first-place winners included Sebastian Wolf, Austin Luce, Abby Meredith. The second-place winners, Tessa Mudday, Rachel Millett, and Sam Reiswitz. So appreciate the great efforts and again, showing that Broncos can compete, not only compete, but they can best kids from any other place around. Thanks to Dr. Tim Green, who is the advisor for the, the group and keynote speaker for that effort as well. So hats off to engineering faculty and staff and students for the great effort there. Oh, speaking of other great student recognitions, our students at Wyder traveled to New York City to participate in the Intercollegiate Broadcast Systems twenty twenty-four conference. They walked away again with some hardware. They won the best radio drama titled Luna Rose, and Glenn Dillon, the Assistant Director of the Student Media, received the Best Faculty Advisor Award. So again, Broncos continue to clean up, and Wyder has got a great tradition, has now got a great space right out there. They, I guess they got out of the basement and now get to be in the corner. And so it's a wonderful broadcasting tradition that not only provides entertainment, but actually changes people's lives. I think one of the first people I got to meet when I came to Western, when I went to the State Capitol, and the Budget Director at that time said how, having worked at Wyder changed his life, and that he remembered it some, many years later, how about that? But those kinds of experiences matter and are part of what providing a high-quality education is all about. Again, thanks to many people who contribute in providing those range of opportunities. Want to give a shout out to Paul Gallagher, who's the Library's Associate Dean for Resources and Digital Strategies. He shared an impressive presentation at the Faculty Senate Meeting on Open Educational Resources Program, and it's a remarkable result, saving Western students one-point-three million dollars in textbook costs since nineteen, since two thousand and nineteen. This is really impressive. They've, the library's given out grants to, ten rounds of grants to faculty and instructors to switch to high-quality online resources and seventy courses. And the result is, rather than having students buy very expensive textbooks, they've been able to meet their educational goals at a much lower price and save literally millions of dollars. Got to give a shout out to Julie Garrison, the Dean of the Libraries and her incredible team for putting together that effort. It's remarkable. It's, again, it's Broncos going above and beyond and then having a real impact for our students. And so I think we should collect the efforts. Got to give a couple more accolades. Women's basketball and Coach Shane Clipfield got qualified for the MAC quarterfinals in basketball. If you watched the game yesterday, they, they, they had a great first half, and then the fact that they only had seven players sort of caught up with them in the second half. They have had incredibly cursed by injuries. They were playing the number-one seed in the whole tournament. And so again, great effort, a very good season by women's basketball, and want to congratulate them. Keep our fingers crossed tonight. Men's basketball takes on Ohio University at the MAC quarterfinals as well. This is their first appearance in the tournament since nineteen twenty and the first time reaching Cleveland in sixteen-seventeen. And we had, had both men and women, the last time they were both in the tournament was nineteen, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. So it's been a while, so good effort by them and their teams and their coaches for getting our folks there. For those who want to watch a clip that was getting lots of attention, you can, I think, are we going to show it here?
Six on the shot clock. Jefferson Delacruz Monegro, off the bounce from distance. My goodness!
Go, has it stripped away. Hover, looking for his first point. Unselfish play and one. How about it?
Even have a point to his name in this game. That's what they wanted. Tyus Wright down low. Here's the kickout. Shot clock at five. Wright spins and finishes. That play that Western Michigan has had dialed up. It's a football round at this point. 1.6 on the clock. The heave. Oh my goodness! The tap-in win! Are you kidding me?
So that's been being shown on ESPN and everywhere, and it's a great clip of the kids never giving up. And so hats off to them, an amazing play and a great way to finish off the season. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Chen Zhang.
Thank you, President Montgomery. Well, I think that the women's basketball success probably because they're energized by their new locker room. Because I was in last celebration. That was an impressive locker room. So very happy. I would now welcome to the podium the representatives from our shared governance. And to the podium first is Dr. Sarah Sun.
Good morning, Pro Tem Chen Zhang. Nice to see you back. Board members, President Montgomery, colleagues, and guests. On behalf of the Western Michigan University Faculty Senate, thank you for this opportunity to update you on our activities, and also national, Happy National Pie Day. The Faculty Senate recently conducted its annual, its biannual general election. Psychology Professor Amy Noggle has been elected as the next Faculty Senate President, and C. Dennis Simpson, School of Interdisciplinary Health Programs, is returning to the Senate to work as the next Vice President. Both take offices, office on May 1st. And Amy is actually here today if she wants to give us a word. There have been many actions, memorandums of actions that have been coming through the Senate. It's the end of the year, so everything that we've been working on is now coming to fruition. First, we have MOA 2304, Establishment of a Review Cycle for Academic Conduct Policies. This was approved by the Senate February 1st. The MOA establishes a five-year cycle of review for all university policies and procedures related to academic conduct. We also have MOA 2401, Unaffiliated Units Curriculum Committee Creation. This was approved by the Faculty Senate on February 29th. The MOA will fill a gap that was identified in order to put faculty at the forefront of the curriculum process for those units that do not have an affiliation with an academic college. There are several other that should be coming forward in April or May. MOA 2403, Direct Course Transfer Criteria Policy. This aims to clarify the long-running unwritten criteria and procedures for transfer courses. MOA 2404, Definition and Procedures for Cross-Level Linked Courses, which will define the current practice at WMU and develop procedures for official implementation of courses that are available to both undergraduate and graduate students at the same time, however, with different learning outcomes. And the last MOA, MOA 2405, Revision of High School Dual Enrolies. This recommends revisions of high school dual enrollment admissions criteria in order to balance between making sure the high school students have the necessary skills and competencies to be successful at WMU, and also widening opportunities and increasing equity. Regarding the recent activity of the Faculty Senate's many councils and committees, in February, the Campus Planning and Finance Council was briefed on and had a chance to discuss the results of the Space Utilization and Facility Condition Study. The Professional Concerns Committee is completing its periodic review of university-wide academic conduct policies and continuing to develop faculty training materials in that area. And the Ad Hoc Committee on Centers and Institutes is in the process of final edits for a revised MOA, and it should be ready for a vote yet this spring. I'm willing to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sun. Thank you for all your, for all the hard work. I know it's a very busy time for you guys. Next, we're going to welcome Ms. Melissa Powers from WSA.
Good afternoon, Chair Pro Tem Chen Zhang, members of the board, and everyone in attendance. This semester has been one of great achievements for the Bronco community. From recognizing the importance of mental health to applauding athletic teams' triumphs, there's so much to highlight and appreciate. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge the significance of Mental Health Week. Mental health is a crucial aspect of our well-being, and it's essential that we continue to foster an environment where open conversations about mental health are encouraged and supported. During Mental Health Week, WSA hosted a mental health fair, which took place on the second floor of the Student Center. RSOs and departments on campus were able to show their support towards mental health and promote different resources that they offer. We had over 500 students come through the mental health fair, myself being one of them, because of course I had to grab a stuff aplush. Special shout out to Lynn Liu, Executive Officer for Student Affairs, for all the hard work and dedication she showed in the planning and execution of Mental Health Week. Before spring break, WSA held a student body election. I'm thrilled to introduce our new administration, who brings with them fresh perspectives and a commitment to advancing our organization's mission. The administration consists of Student Body President-elect Alex Casperzak, Student Body President, Student Body Vice President-elect Luke Kritzman, and Executive Chief of Staff-elect Jordan Dunn. I would like to I would like to extend a warm welcome and support as they embark on this journey. These three individuals have shown dedication and commitment to the organization, and I look forward to all they will accomplish in their term and the legacy that they will leave on the Western community. March is Women's History Month, a time to honor contributions and achievements of women throughout history. We take this opportunity to celebrate the Trailblazers who paved the way for progress and inspire future generations to continue breaking barriers. If you have a second while you're on campus today, I highly encourage everyone to stop by the Student Center to take a moment to appreciate the Women's History Month art exhibit. This art exhibit highlights female student art in relation to Women's History Month. Also for Women's History Month, we hosted a Presidential Leadership Series in collaboration with the Board of Trustees in the Office of the President. This Oprah-style interview gave us an opportunity to highlight Trustee Burris and all of her accomplishments in the field of aerospace engineering as well as patent law. Thank you to Trustee Burris for sharing your story and providing advice to young female Broncos. A special shout out to Ryan Tay, WSA Executive Officer for Governmental Affairs, for his work in highlighting Women's History Month on campus. Bronco athletics have also had numerous achievements this semester. Our Bronco skating team has set a new school record at their third Midwest intercollegiate competition, which helped them qualify for Nationals. They ended their qualifying season in third place out of 29 teams. Today, the men's basketball team will face Ohio in the MAC Tournament Quarterfinals, and this weekend, the Bronco hockey team will be playing in the NCHC Quarterfinals. They are currently ranked 12th in the NCAA for Division One Hockey. Let's rally behind these athletes and show our support as they compete with passion and sportsmanship. Beyond athletics, our student organizations have also been making their own ways. Our hip-hop-based RSO 269 Crew was given the opportunity to perform at the Detroit Pistons game. While I'm unsure how they were able to move their bodies and make it look so effortlessly, I commend them for their creative and energized performance. Last week, Wyder participated in the Intercollegiate Broadcasting System, where they were able to take home the award of Best Radio Drama and Best Faculty Advisor. Congratulations to Wyder, and thank you for the platform and voice you give to all Broncos. Additionally, I invite you all to join us this Saturday for the International Bazaar, where we'll come together to celebrate diversity in rich tapestry and cultures within our community. This event is open to the public and will bring in multiple cultural RSOs and other community vendors. It's an event where we connect WMU with the greater Kalamazoo community to celebrate diversity in the international students among us. There will be traditional dances, games, face painting, and more. Thank you to the International Student Council for hosting this event and for giving our community the opportunity to learn from one another and celebrate our differences. While I could stand up here all day highlighting numerous achievements and events that showcase vibrant spirit and diversity of our community, I leave you with this. While my administration's term was cut short, I would like to thank the entire WSA leadership team with special shout-outs to Mason DeRod, Jordan Dunn, and Clayton Weirda. I couldn't have asked for a better team to work with. With my graduation coming up in just over a month, and I reflect on my time here at WMU, I can say that WSA has made an everlasting impact on my time here, and I'm glad to say that I'm not alone in this conclusion. I look forward to seeing the greater impact that WSA will have on the future generations of Broncos. Thank you, and as always, onward for the Brown and Gold.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powers, and congratulations on your upcoming graduation, and the bazaar on this Saturday certainly sounds like fun. So I might go there just to have some fun and some very, very international cuisines. I remember went to some of that, of course, not in the fancy hour, new Student Center, but still, nevertheless, it was fun during my time as a student. So now, thank you, Dr. Montgomery. It's your turn to introduce our guest and the next item on our agenda, WMU Students' Journey in the Capital Intern Program.
So Western's been known for a long time for experience-driven learning. This is really a centerpiece of what we are as a campus and how we help students both find their passion and then go on and have very successful careers. And we have got a number of these programs, which have just been exemplars for a large number of years, one of which is the Capital Intern Program. This is a program, my first exposure to it when I got to visit the Capitol soon after.
Huge advantage to students. I'm a college student. I work in a daycare. It's simply not a financial possibility for me to afford to go up to Lansing two times a week for months on end. And it's something I really admire about Western as a school, that we not only open the doors for our students with our opportunities, but we help facilitate them through with structuralized support to help students really fulfill the entire capacity of their opportunities. My position is the same as many other students. We wouldn't be able to do this without that sort of fiscal support. And not only that, but we are not pigeonholed or limited to our own experiences. The in-class participation that is supplemental to the Capital Intern Program allows all of the students to have a variety of experiences. I'm within the legislative field right now, but I have gotten to hear from lobbyists, from city managers, from prosecutors. So not only are we getting experiences within the internship, we are also getting experiences within the classroom. It has changed my career opportunities, perspectives, and networks in a way that is entirely incomparable. I am so honored to be representative of the good that this program does, of the opportunities that this program presents, and I do hope that you will forgive me for my hasty leave. And I want to thank you all for your support of this program.
Madeline is the absolute best of what we have in the Capital Intern Program, and if it was up to me, she would absolutely get this job this afternoon. So best of luck to you, Madeline, in the interview. All right, I'm just the boring part here. I'm the Director of the Capital Intern Program, Assistant Professor of Political Science, Lauren Foley. It's a pleasure to talk with you all today. I just want to give you a bit of an overview and contextualize the experience that Madeline just spoke with you all about. What is this Capital Intern Program? Well, these are internships throughout government, public policy, law, policy organizations, executive departments, that students are able to participate in because we, Western, provide the transportation for them to go up to Lansing twice a week. Madeline would actually be in Lansing right now if it wasn't for this job interview that she has today. This program was founded by my predecessor, Dr. David Houghton, tremendous professor in political science, who had this vision of being able to partner with students for internship experience, take the classroom out into the real world. He was able to found this program formally through Western in 1991, but between Dr. Houghton and myself, over 1,000 interns have participated in the Capital Program since the 1970s. There are a number of strengths of the Capital Intern Program. The first is that it's a joint venture between the Political Science Department and the Lee Honors College. This means that not all of the students are political science majors who are in it. I've had aviation students, I have obviously English majors, communications, psychology. I've had chemistry students before who come in through the Honors College. The Honors College helps provide the transportation and support the program, and it just makes it stronger for having all of these different student perspectives in the Capital Program each spring semester. The second strength is the longevity of this program. Having interns into the 70s, institutionalized since the 1990s, former Capital interns now supervise current Capital interns. We have here one of our very own, Vice President Jeff Brenneman, no idea what he's doing today. And Assistant Vice President Fred Shibley here, who's supervised in the Office of Government Relations, intern Sam Longlet, who's kind of hidden here behind Congresswoman Shulten, but is able to tour Michigan facilities through his internship and meet other representatives of government. And we have a number of other former interns as well. Madeline interning for Senator Sean McCann, alum of the Capital Intern Program, too. The next strength of the Capital Intern Program is that Western made the choice to institutionalize it. What do I mean by this? Western has a faculty advisor, me, who is, part of my job is to advise and lead this program. We meet with students, match them with internships, guide them through the application process, work with them on professional skills, and then I have all of them in a Monday afternoon seminar class while they are doing their internships. I think that institutionalized programs like this, as opposed to free-standing standalone internships that students just go out and do on their own and maybe write a few assignments for a faculty member while they're doing them, I think the institutionalized versions are the best practices for experiential learning in internships in higher education. And this isn't just my opinion. I've actually published on it. This is an article that came out this past fall on "Institutionalizing Internships: Enhance Civic Culture Through State Capital Internship Programs," published in the Journal of Political Science Education. This is a study, multi-year IRB study, that I ran with the version of me at Michigan State University, Dr. Marty Jordan, that also institutionalizes their internship programs. And we surveyed our students before and after the program, both in the Capital Programs and also in standalone internships, asking them questions about the experience, civic culture, political engagement, and what they've learned. And what our study showed is that there are larger gains in democratic virtues, and like greater political knowledge, greater trust in government, greater sense of political efficacy, right, that you can make a difference, that government is working for you. There are larger gains in this for participants of these institutionalized, faculty-led programs. These participants are more likely than students in standalone internships to believe that they can affect change, that political officials care about them, and they have a greater faith in political institutions, which at this moment in American politics seems to me like exactly what political science should be doing, is helping people trust government and trust democracy. So because Western has chosen to institutionalize this program, our interns are better informed and better citizens than people just doing standalone internships on their own within political science. The IRB is still continuing. We've added a number of different questions this year and hoping to continue to publish on this research. So this is just the first of a larger research agenda and partnership between Western and Michigan State. After the Capital Intern Program, it's really just the beginning for these students. The professional skills and networking that they work on in the program, they practice cold interviews, they practice emailing people to expand their network, they practice writing resumes and cover letters and personal statements. They go out, they use these skills to get other internships, to do job interviews, to get jobs after graduation. My predecessor, Dr. Houghton, left behind a tremendous legacy, not only in this program, but in creating an endowment, a scholarship for students to go intern in Washington, DC. And just about one student a year, even through the pandemic, is able to use this scholarship money to go and pursue an internship in DC. Here we have former Capital Intern Haley Van Dusen, who interned this past fall with Senator Stabenow in Washington, DC, and photo of that. And students get jobs from their placements as well. Every year, a handful of students through the networks that they develop on their internship are offered jobs, mostly in the Michigan Legislature. And I have the wonderful delight of continuing to have former Capital interns supervise current Capital interns. Other folks begin their careers in politics that way, and then, oh, I don't know, wind up working for universities, say, in the Government Relations Office after illustrious careers throughout politics in Michigan and DC. So it is a tremendous program that really benefits the students who are able to be a part of it, and the institutionalized support of it is what makes a difference for people like Madeline, both being able to provide the transportation to get them there in the first place, and then also have the faculty piece helping them get the experience, match with the site, continue on afterwards, and learn important professional skills along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's, this program is so important. We need to send qualified people to DC to be politicians. We all know how important that is. So kudos to you. We're doing our part. So, Dr. Schuma, are there any public comments regarding action items?
There's no indicated interest in public comments today. Thank you.
Thank you. And we only, today only have the consent items. So any trustees would like to pull any of the consent items for separate consideration? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
(inaudible).
And it's a roll call.
It is a roll call vote. Chair Pro Tem Chen Zhang.
Yes.
Trustee Burris.
Yes.
Trustee Holdley.
Yes.
Trustee Liggins.
Yes.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem Chen Zhang, Consent Items Pass.
Thank you. And are there any public comments?
There are not.
Thank you. Well, now I got adjourned a meeting. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Remember, I always forget that when I was the chair?
Support.
Thank you. Motion passed, meeting adjourned. Thank you all, good seeing you.
See you later.
Remember, I always got a card for forgetting.
You did.